Day weekend and I don't know if you're like me, I can't, can't keep my day straight. So I keep thinking today is Tuesday, but surprise is Wednesday. If y'all have that same problem, I heard when you retire, you forget what day it is and every day is Saturday. So I look forward to that means I eat steak and have a couple of glasses of red wine every Saturday. So that sounds like heaven to me, but, um, but anyway, it is Wednesday. It's two o'clock and we're at our bi-monthly, I guess that's right, bi-monthly town hall meeting. Bi-weekly, that's why I know I said something wrong, bi-weekly town hall meeting. So we got some really exciting things to go over today and some really good announcements. We even have a special guest will be joining us here shortly. Ms. Peg Bedini, who's over our endowment committee, she's going to be talking about our upcoming campaign and what we have planned for that. So, uh, so stay tuned for that. Hopefully there's nothing more important y'all would rather be watching right now, no sporting events or anything. So, um, so welcome to our humble abode and if everybody's ready, we'll get the show on the road. It's too skinny Jay song, by the way. Somebody know that? Okay. All right. So here we go. So as of today and before we walked in here a couple of hours ago, we found out today that we are totally COVID free at Springmore, which is really, really exciting news. So the health center has no active cases with residents or employees. Independent living, as you know, knock on wood, I won't even jinx it and say what y'all all know about the residents and only having a couple of staff members early on. So right now we have zero cases of COVID in all of Springmore. So spread that good news. That is, um, that is an awesome, awesome accomplishment. Whenever we had, you know, a lot at first and then they'd go down, they come back up. Um, I, I think it's a couple of things. I think it's, I think for sure the weekly testing has helped. We're in our third week of weekly testing and for the past two weeks we have had, uh, we have not had any positive cases. So that has been really, really awesome. Um, we, um, we do this every Friday. We have to submit our results. So we have to test all the residents and all the staff. The guys y'all know every week. So, um, I think that has really helped a lot. I think just, I don't know, the pure, you know, the, the amount of people we've had. Hopefully, as you know, I'm sure, I'm not saying we're not going to get another case. We could get one tomorrow. We all know that, but, um, but the weekly testing's really helped us identify people mainly that were asymptomatic. The residents, we've been able to identify really quick that's had symptoms. Employees have been really good about coming to us with any symptoms and we've been able to test them onsite. But doing the weekly testing is just, man, it's just really helped the asymptomatic, um, residents and employees. So great news, um, COVID free today in the health center. Some other things that go along with that, um, that's very important is, uh, is outside, eventually outside visitations for families and then staff testing. So if we can go, I believe it's 14 days. If we can go two more weeks without any positive tests, we can do bi-weekly. I'm not saying that right, bi-weekly testing. So every other week we'll have to test staff instead of every week. So we've got to go 14 days with no new cases and then we can pull back our testing for, um, just once every two weeks. And then something that's even more important is, is outside visitation. Y'all may have heard that, uh, I guess it was last week, the governor announced a few things. We can have 25 people gather, 25, um, people gather inside and then 50 people gather outside. So we're already working on how we can increase gatherings here and activities. And, um, we'll talk about some of that here in a minute, then individual announcements will be coming out. But another thing they announced was, um, visitations in skilled nursing homes. So there's a couple of things that we have to do before that. The most important thing is you have to be COVID free with no new cases for 28 consecutive days. And if you go, um, 28 days with, um, with no new cases, then you can allow outside visitation only. Now outside visitation only would be still six feet apart, still wearing a mask, and it would be monitored by a staff member. So, um, so I think I mentioned this, um, two weeks ago. Remember that's a state guideline and not a Springmore guideline or a Glen Air guideline or anything like that. That's what every community is bound by. So, um, so if we can go to the 24th and have no new cases, we can begin outside visitations. The bad part is if we, like I said, if we get another case, it starts back over. So we're trying our very hardest to do that and to make that happen for all the ones that have been so patient with, um, out seeing their loved ones, especially the spouses that live here, not being able to see their spouse in the health center. I can't even imagine how hard that's been and that's been part of the worst thing I've ever had to do. Or the second worst thing I've ever had to do in my career is tell a family member they couldn't go see their loved one at the health center. So that's been absolutely terrible. Um, but I've been tasked with that and I've had to stick with that. And, um, and, uh, and I apologize for that, but you know, I have to do that and that's my job. So, but we're making progress and, uh, hopefully that will happen. So, so just keep your fingers crossed for that. Other things we have to do, we have to establish, um, visitation guidelines. We've got to establish visitor, I mean visitor, visitation guidelines, safety guidelines, testing procedure guidelines. We have to have like five sets of policies and procedures of what we're doing. So when the state does come in and they want to see where our visitation area is, make sure they're monitored. Make sure they're six feet apart, make sure that they're wearing, uh, masks. They also want to see these policies and if we're not in compliance with that, they could pull us back or we get cited for it. So those are the fine details that you don't hear probably just a quick news brief, which you shouldn't hear. But that's in the secretarial order number two, if you read it thoroughly. So anyway, great news, great progress. So I will, um, keep everybody up to date on that and, uh, let you know when we can hopefully start visitations with families. So continue to pray for us, um, and the residents, we stay COVID free. Second of all, that brings up a question and concern or actually an opportunity to, um, increase our visitations in independent living. We're not ready to let people in the building right yet. We've been very successful so far with the outside visits, um, of gathering outside at any time and then having the two common areas, North and South Village with the, um, signups when those hour increments, those are going well. We have had to let a fam, a couple of family members in on a very special, um, occasion of somebody passed away and they had to get something or if they had to move from an independent apartment to a health center and they had to get something. So we've had to make special exceptions. Um, and that's just, that's the only reason if you've seen anybody in there, they've all had permission. Well, I can't say that for sure. Everybody, if you see somebody in the hall, they should have an approved visitor sign. It should be few and far between for a special, um, a visit. If you see somebody in the hallway that doesn't have on a badge, make sure you call the front desk and they'll, then they'll send a guard. I was speaking to a resident today and there was a family member with, um, resident that passed away that was helping get some stuff out of the room. Apparently they didn't have on a badge, so they did the right thing by calling. So continue to do that as we, as we, um, as we work on that. Some of the things that we will look at, um, when we eventually do open up for visitors is making sure that everybody signs in and out at the front, um, entrance of either North or South Village. Uh, they'll all, they'll have to be given a name badge, uh, their temperature will have to be taken. They can only go straight to the residence room. They can't go in any common room. They can't stop and talk. They can't get any food from the dining room or the bistro. They can only go straight there and straight back and those will be on increment times as well. So we've not had those details ironed out yet, but we're working to, to see what's best for us at Springmore and then working with other communities to see what they have in place to see what best suits us. So, so more of that to come, but for now we're, there's no inside visitations unless it's been approved. But we're working to open those back up eventually and we'll have more information, um, when that comes. In the meantime, just, um, keep doing what you're doing, the outside visits and the common areas. So all that, uh, deals with COVID and visitation. Another thing that dealt with COVID for a while and, uh, some construction, but really, um, pleased and very excited to talk about dining. And this is not some trying to pump you up about something great and, and, and make something better than it is. But, but dining has really gotten a lot better over the past few weeks. I've received three emails just today from residents saying how great the meal was. I actually got to eat in the dining room today. I had no intentions of eating in there, but I went in to get, um, to just see what was in the line to see the salad bar and I got some of the, the marinated cheeses they had there. The green beans that had the sauce on there for the salad bar and then I tried the chicken carbona. It was very, very good. So I just set at the table with four other ladies. We talked, they had great things to say. I visited another table. They had good things to say about the chicken and I got back and I had three emails from, um, from three different residents that live in the houses and villas complimenting how great the meal was today and over the past few days. So I say that to really encourage you, or I'm personally begging you to please come to the dining room and please check it out. See what the line looks like. See the sat, the new salad bar they have. See the entree salads they have. Come get a fresh hot meal. Um, it, there's, there, there, there's no way that having a meal delivered is going to be as good as it is in the dining room. So I, I just beg you to please come back, see the new uniforms the resident, the employees have on to the tablecloths. We got the plates back, the dishes, all that's great. And there's just a lot of good things going on. So, um, just the other night, um, I will talk about, uh, what I put this, um, da, 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 da. Oh yeah, about, about the salad bar. That has been really neat to where we have the entree salad bar that, that's always available. And that's what I think the salmon's been on there. I've had a lot of good compliment, compliments about that. But you know, we've changed like 28 items from the previous menu and we have some more changes I'll talk about in a minute. But it has been a really, really good improvement over the past few days. Since we've got back in there, some different decor, just even in the line and the way things are arranged. So, so please come, come check it out. Again, the meal's always going to be better, straight out of the kitchen to your table than if it's delivered. I don't know about y'all, there are certain things I won't get delivered or do takeout. We never do Mexican takeout and I never think Mexican tastes good when you take it out. It's always just soggy and it just, it's just never good. I would never go to a nice steakhouse and get a steak to go unless I absolutely had to. That's just something I wouldn't do personally. Just last night, my wife brought me back home a burrito from Mo's and I can assure you, it takes probably the same amount of time to get to Mo's or where she went to in Falls River to our house. It's easy, it's just as quick as it is to get a meal delivered from the kitchen to the houses and villas. And it was cold and it didn't taste all that great. I ate it and I warmed it up, but again, it's not like making it fresh right there and then sitting down to eat. So, um, that just happened to me last night, but I knew when I was getting it to bring home, I didn't want to get up out of the bed from watching the Braves and go to meet my wife and kid to mother-in-law at Mo's. So I said, bring it home. So anyway, that's just a cheesy example, um, no pun intended, of just how, how, how a meal just is so much better and tastes better in the dining room. So please come see what they've done. They have worked really hard and we have bent over backwards for everybody to deliver these meals during COVID, but the delivery has really hurt us, I think in the long run because it's people have become accustomed to it. I know it's a nice amenity, but we've got to get people back in the dining room and get people to do takeout again. How we do delivery moving forward, I'm not sure if we will continue it and if we do, um, some fee attached to it. But it's, it's never going to be as good as the dining room. As many people say dining room's the most important, I mean dining's the most, one of the most important aspects of Springmore because there's so much of socialization that you do. So it's good to get out, it's good to see people and it's good to have a meal. So that's my plea and my beg for you to try the dining room. Let me know what you think and I think you'll be very, very pleased with it. I think it's a huge improvement. It will only get better. So with that said, we have a couple of more things to talk about in dining, some exciting things. Um, September 22nd in North Village and September 23rd in South Village, we're going to do a meet the chef event. So more, more details will be posted on that. So it will be meeting the new chef JP. September 27th, we will, it will be the first week of our new menu. So we've been able to change some items pretty quick on the current menu we have, but it takes a while to construct the new menu. And I know we can debate all the long about the mobile kitchen and stuff there, here and there. But doing the mobile kitchen, doing COVID, there was not a lot of extra time to sit and just create things. We had to do the best we could. Now we're back settled. We're working on a new menu. It will be done, um, completed on the 27th and that's when it will first start. So expect a new menu the first week, um, September 27th. Um, October 21st, there's going to be a special dinner event. So more details for that to be posted. Something that Jennifer's pitched to me a while back and it's something that the food committee talked about a while back. Um, even from Kay had an idea, um, Bullock to, um, to how it's evolved now. So that's going to be a neat event here before it gets cool, October 21st. So more, more details to come on that. Um, the always available menu will be starting again this Friday. If you remember before, if you're a new resident, you can always have baked salmon, baked chicken, a baked sweet potato or a baked potato anytime you want that. So we've had to stop that, the mobile kitchen, um, and during COVID, but we're starting that back, um, this Friday. So look forward, look forward to that. And then the happy or not, remember that can still be used, use that feedback on there to, to talk about your meal, rate it. But the best way to do it is just, it's just stop somebody in the dining room. Find Jennifer, find George, find the chef, email them, let them know. Today we were thankful, we got three wonderful comments. I know it's not always going to be like that, but please just let us know so, so we can fix it. But anyway, you can let us know, but the happier nights are working. And, um, and that's about all we have going on right now in dining. So that, that, that's a lot. I say that's about all, but that's a huge accomplishment of, of, of what we've done. And I've heard a lot of good compliments i- in the past week. So, so hopefully they'll continue and I feel confident that they will. So. All right. So from dining, we're going to move on here to pathways. Spiritual wellness, we continue to have some good events there. And just a reminder that we can have 25 people in the auditorium now. I think we can successfully, I think Randy and Leah worked out where there are 25 chairs and here spaced out, um, properly. So, um, remember that the, um, the participation size of any group, if the people holding the group want to increase the size, can be increased by 15 people. So it can be, um, 25 instead of 10. So, um, this week, I think this week, September 10th on Thursday. And then tomorrow they'll have their Zoom discussion group and Sunday, the 13th for Vespers at 7:00 PM is Reverend Bob Enskeep. He's a Presbyterian minister from St. Andrews in Henderson. Heard really good things about him. I think he was the one that was on W, um, WN, UNC radio, right? Um, he was a radio host on there and now he's a pastor. So I looked him up and I was curious if he was, um, related to Steve Enskeep. Y'all may know him. He's on morning edition, I believe on NPR. I was like, oh, they've got to be related, you know, they're both NPR. It's a very unique name, but, um, come to find out they're not related. Steve Enskeep is younger than Bob Enskeep. So I was thinking Bob may be his dad, but anyway, I don't think there's any relationship, but very interesting, both are NPR news announcers, um, and Steve still is on national NPR. But Bob Enskeep, um, now Presbyterian minister from Henderson, um, North Carolina with, um, with Presbyterian church there. So he will be here and I've heard great things about him. And, uh, Monday on September 14th, we'll have the Chaplain's matinee movie, Calendar Girls, starring Helen Moran, Marion? Miren? Helen Miren. Never heard of that movie or her, but I'm sure it's good. Calendar Girls, that sounds good, Brad, maybe. Like, uh, yeah, me too. It's like a pretty girl for each month, I guess. I don't know. I don't know. It's probably not the Chaplain movie, but one can wish. All right. So, um, I think that's it for the, uh, spiritual wellness stuff. Uh, we're going to get into the fitness and mainly the fitness is going to talk about flu shots this year. I'm not exactly sure here how Carrie Ritchie got the job of coordinating our flu clinics, but somehow she did and she does a darn good job with it. So we are ramping up to do the flu clinics this year for all the residents. So I have some announcements and then of course Holly will put all this stuff in the recap, cause this is really hard to remember. But I do want to make these announcements so you will know. Um, the flu shots for independent residents will be provided by Walgreens Pharmacy this year. Do they do it last year? They did? Okay. So apparently they did well. Carrie liked them, so we're going to use them again. Um, so you must sign up for an appointment this year. So I think in the past you could just come, but with all the restrictions and limitations, like everything else, you gotta have an appointment. So this year there are three dates to choose from. Thursday, September 24th, North Village Auditorium. Wednesday, September 30th, in the South Village Gathering Room. And Thursday, October 8th, in the North Village Auditorium. So we'll put those dates in the memo and I'm sure Carrie will have them posted all over if not already to make sure y'all know. But you can sign up for an appointment online, click on the sign up genius link located in the announcements on the portal. You can also call Carrie Ritchie to sign up for an appointment. Uh, Walgreens, the Walgreens form must be filled out prior to your appointments, just like going to a doctor's appointment. Need to make sure you fill out that form before you get, before you go to your scheduled flu shot date. And the forms are now available by the North Village Mail Area near the auditorium and South Village Mail Area. So make sure you pick those up and have that filled out so you can, uh, have a seamless flu shot on those, uh, three days that you choose to reserve. Um, lastly, pool reminders, uh, the Wellness Center pool is now available, available for Saturday reservations, starting Saturday, September 12th. So remember you can make a reservation on the sign up genius and the pool will be open from one to four on this coming Saturday. So you call Carrie with any questions. So again, we're trying to slowly open things up and implement as much as we can. So the Wellness Center pool will open this Saturday from one to four. It'll be open every Saturday moving forward until we can open it up a more and more regular basis. All right. So the last thing I want to talk about before we introduce, um, Ms. Peg to come up and talk about our endowment is, um, stuff from, um, life enrichment. As you know, Leah worked really close and helps put together our election stuff here at Springmore. A lot of people have had questions about the election. A lot of it's kind of been unknown. And, uh, the one thing we do know is that we do know that there's going to be a precinct at Springmore, just like normal to vote. The specifics, we don't know yet. Um, Leah is still working on that. She, um, I will tell you that, um, that she has put together some frequently asked questions that is just really, really good. Holly's going to send these out in a separate attachment, um, later this week. It's just too much to put in the recap memo. It's such valuable information. We don't want to get it lost in the, um, in the, um, in the recap memo. So we're going to send that out later this week. But, um, but just, uh, a few highlights, uh, again, just a reminder that our onsite precinct will be open for voting here at Springmore. But the rooms changed. So instead of it being set up in the great room this year, it's going to be set up in the auditorium. So right here to be set up, the main reason is we have a way in and a way out. And we can sign up people outside in this area. We can socially distance people down the hallway. So there's just, um, sets, this is just a better setup for, for voting this year. So it will, we will be a precinct, but it will be in the auditorium this year. Again, we'll know a lot more details after the Wake County Board of Elections holds their training sessions. They have not had training sessions yet. So a lot of the specifics that some of y'all have asked about, we won't know until we have that training session, but just know we will be a precinct. Uh, please hold all questions for now and we'll even have the chief judge of our precinct on one of our weekly broadcasts in the future. So as soon as we can, we'll have him come on the town hall meeting at either two o'clock or either Leah's morning show she does, um, every Tuesday at nine o'clock. So we'll, uh, let you know more information about that. Uh, but in the meantime, absentee ballot request forms are available in the Springmore library and they're also available on the Springmore portal. So, um, so, so make sure you can go by the, the library or the portal and request an absentee balance. Um, and some, just some important dates, um, just a, just a reminder. Um, October 9th is the voter registration deadline for November general election. The 15th of October is when early voting begins. October 27th absentee by mail request deadline for November general election. Early voting ends on October 31st and then November 3rd is the big day, the election day. 2020, Trump Biden, the main event. And, uh, I'm not sure what time the polls close, like 7:30? Yeah, Peg says 7:30 probably roughly. We'll take Peg's, um, on that, 7:30. We'll anxiously be waiting on our results and hopefully it won't be anything like the 2000 election where we wait several weeks. But we never know. Time will tell. It's 2020. We may wait a whole year. So anyway, that is all the announcements that I have. Again, we'll get the recap memo out. It is, um, it is very, um, very good information. Make sure all this stuff's in here. Um, we'll make sure your families get it and we'll make sure you get electronic copy. If you have an email and a hard copy will be in your mailbox, um, by tomorrow. So with that being said, we'll take questions after we have Ms. Peg come up. So Ms. Peg, if you'd like to come up and we'll turn the camera over to her and, uh, she's got a microphone set up and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Brandon, for letting me have this opportunity to talk with you. It would be much nicer to be able to do it in person as I have done so often, but since we are not having residents association meetings, this seemed to be a great way to get some information to you. All of us made the decision to come to Springmore for various reasons. Because we found something there that we really liked. One of the most appealing certainly is the guarantee that should you run out of money through no fault of your own, you will not be asked to leave Springmore. Springmore will take care of you. The Endowment Fund was created many years ago to assist in that situation. And currently up to 100% of the earnings from the Endowment Invested Fund is used to help those who need assistance. Many of you donate regularly to the endowment and very generously. You donate in memory of someone, in honor of someone. We do other activities, the raffle, the yard sale, bingo, the holiday card sale. But once a year we do a full campaign. And on Monday, September 14th, you will get a personally delivered packet with endowment campaign information. Included in the packet is a brochure with information about the endowment fund, a return slip with a return envelope to make it easy for you. The campaign will last only one week. We don't tell you that we would like to have a certain amount from you. We want you to give from your heart and give generously whatever amount works for you. What we are interested in is having a great deal of participation and we would like to see as many independent residents participate as possible. Just remember, the ones who are given assistance are your friends and neighbors. We will share the results with you as soon as they are available and I thank you in advance for your generosity in helping all of us.
Okay. Thank you Peg for doing that. Um, I, I will say it just, it just jogged my memory whenever, whenever, um, Peg was talking about the endowment committee and, and what it's about. And I said, and I didn't even think about this until she, I mean, I thought about what it was, but I wasn't going to talk about it until she said it. I said earlier that the second worst thing I've had to do in my career was tell a spouse that they cannot see their loved one at the health center. The worst thing I've ever had to do in my career is tell a resident they've had to leave. They have to leave a community because they ran out of money. And I've had to do that more than once in my first, um, in my first job and the first community and company I worked with in long-term care. Um, we're, I worked for a for-profit company and, um, and that's just how they operated. There's nothing bad about them. They're great. They just do things a different way. And you know upfront, when you come here, we'll take care of you, not Springmore. A lot of these for-profits will take care of you, but when your money runs out, you gotta go. You pay or you leave and that is awful to have somebody in a nursing home who's flat out of money. They make $15 more than the Medicaid requirement and they have nowhere to go. So I don't even like to think about those days. It's awful. It's heartbreaking. But knowing that you come to Springmore and you never have to worry about that is such a huge relief. I know it's, um, obviously not cheap to live here. I know you have to put down an investment, but that investment is a lifelong guarantee of, of healthcare and a lifelong guarantee of you being cared for forever. So one of the best parts of my job, if not the best part, is getting to present these endowment cases to our board and getting subsidy approved for residents. Um, I've had to do that probably 10 times or less in my five years I've been here. And it's a great feeling for me to be able to go back to a resident or a family member and say, I've, I've been able to get you approved for the endowment fund. So it's, it's a whole thing. I've said it before. I know it's a humbling experience, but come to me. Let me take that stress off of your shoulders. Let me put it on mine and let me help you, um, you know, with, um, to get you approved. You have, you've given so much to Springmore over the years. So now it's our turn to, to help you. You have, you've given so much to Springmore over the years, so now it's our turn to, to help you. So that's exactly what Ms. Peg talks about. And the coolest thing is that everything's a grassroots effort here. I mean, we don't have professional people doing campaigns for us or, or, you know, we don't have hire. We don't have a full-time staff member who does nothing but philanthropy. And a lot of places do, but our fund is as big as anyone that I know of. It's been around for almost 25 years and it's all grassroots grown. And even with the stock market up and down, just a couple of weeks ago, I think it was the highest it's ever been, right Peg? So, so it's still just doing absolutely phenomenal. So anyway, it's a great thing to do. I know y'all give a lot every day to Springmore and, but we hope that you will give to this wonderful endowment that we do every year. So with that, I will be happy and I assume Ms. Peg would too. Probably I'll volunteer, if she might want to. If you wanted to call with any questions, 7054. And we will try to answer anything you may have. See what question number one is. So the question is, when will tables be put back in the bistro? We're not sure yet. That is, that's one area that we're having to use as a multi-purpose space. We do our takeouts from there. So, so we don't, you know, usually when you go through the line in at least the North and South Village, you can do takeout or you can go through the line and sit in the dining room. But since we have to socially distance and we can't have so many people in, in an area, 25 now, but still that, that can get, that can fill up pretty quick. We've had to utilize the bistro to, to do our takeout stuff and our, and our grab and go. So, so until further notice, the tables will not be open into the, in the bistro. But the good news is I think there's a full menu. Am I right in the bistro now, that Peg? Is it a full? Yeah, I think there's, there's a full menu in the bistro. So unfortunately you got to get it to go. We don't have the tables in there yet, but once we get away from the delivery as soon as we can, or really, really minimize it and have more people come back, we can open the bistro back up. But that, we're kind of, hands are tied with having to have that as a queuing station for takeout and delivery. Anything else? Oh. Saved by the bell. So the question was, when will the terrace room be available for coffee again? I am not sure. I do not, I've not thought about that or talked with Jennifer about that. But I'll have Holly make note of that and we will try to find out. Yeah, we can hopefully try to start opening some places a little bit. There's going to be limited capacity. So the health center, if I told y'all early on to try to think of things we could do internally to help the spread of the virus, we did, we, we walked through everything in the health center and thought of what can we do to help? So one of it was limiting just gatherings around the nurse station, limiting the break rooms, letting, I think I told you, employees eat in the dining rooms after or before the residents so they can spread out. Their family's not coming in, so it really doesn't, doesn't matter if they eat in there. We don't like for families to see that because that's a residence place, but this is a weird time. So, so we've put max capacity signs on all of the health center into every room. That's probably what we'll end up doing here soon. Actually, if we get a call or try to jump ahead of anybody that, that may call, ask about the parlors. Randy is helping me with that to see how many people we can fit in the parlor rooms based on the square footage. So he, he's, he's helping me with that. I don't have, we don't have that rolled out yet, but we're working on that. So that will probably depend on the terrace room as well, how many people we can have in there and then about the coffee. So we'll, we'll, we'll try to get you an answer for that. I know you guys miss that and it is fun to see y'all over there. All right, we're waiting on one other question. In the meantime, just a reminder about the, the COVID cases. If you see a chart or if you, or you hear anything, a lot of these charts are historical data. So they'll keep those things of how many cases we had or things of that nature. But what I've always tried to emphasize to people is of what we have right now. It, it matters how many things we've had in the past, so we need to keep that. But what matters most is current because it affects how we move forward. So that's why I want people to focus on is the, the current cases of zero. So if you see anything in a website or a news story about places, not just Springmore, remember that's how many total cases they have. And it may not be their accurate, most, it may not be accurate active cases. So again, I was, I won't get into that, but the news got ahold of me that was not happy for saying that they were reporting inaccurate information. And unfortunately they were because the Department of Health and Human Services was, was reporting inaccurate information. And sorry about that, but that's the truth as well, that our numbers are not accurate. So, so again, I've never really cared about what other places have or what people are published. But I just care about what y'all know and what we publish every day is accurate. So just remember active cases is really what we're focusing on. But we do have historical stuff as well. So, so we had an employee that was in the hospital. I can't get too deep into that because that's a HIPAA thing. But I know a lot of people have asked about that and I, and I know he's welcomed prayers and, and warm wishes. And he's just, oh my gosh, just had such the nicest things to say about how he's only been at Springmore for a short amount of time. And actually Juliana, who's in here with us now, told us about that, about how he felt like it was a family and so close and how much we cared. And we, you know, we sent him some stuff and helped his family a little bit, let him know we were thinking about him. He is doing better, he is recovering and, and and he, yes, yes, that's right. And he has recovered from COVID. So, so that, so just because he is not back to work, he, he is COVID-free. So, so there's no point in, because he's still in rehab, there's, he, he's not, he's not actively has COVID. So that's why it's not an active case. So sometimes we will have a resident in our isolation unit that Dr. Edmondson or Deborah Orr thinks needs to stay in our isolation unit a little bit longer just because they're getting that one-on-one attention, that special help. And they're still just not back 100%. But they're past their 14 days COVID, they're COVID-free. So, so, so technically they're not, even though they're on there for some extra treatment and special treatment, which they're well deserved, they're not an active case. So, so again, he, he's not active COVID, he's just not back at work yet. But he's making leaps and bounds recovery, didn't know if he was going to make it. So if y'all prayed for him, thank you very much. God is good. All right. Well, that is it. Thank y'all for joining me. Peg, thanks for being here. Hope everybody will consider donating to the endowment fund. Just remember how it helps each other and just remember for any unforeseen situation, you may be in that situation one day. So it's neighbors helping neighbor. So hopefully you'll give to, to promote Springmore Endowment, which is a great, great thing. So I hope you all have a great rest of the week and we will see y'all, I don't know the next date, Holly, do you know? Me neither. Well, 25, so we'll see you on the 20, 23rd. 23rd, we'll see you in two weeks on the 23rd. Y'all have a great rest of the day. Thank you.